Good evening. I would like to call the tribal special meeting to order. Ms. Allen, would you please call it up?
Yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. The meeting has been called to order. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Next up is the mission statement that I will read. The mission of the Tri伍wood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment of lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere. Now I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move to adopt the agenda as presented.
I second.
Okay. It has been... Are there any changes?
Just a question. There was an executive session on this one. Are we going to have one or not? And I would think if we're not, we should put that in the minutes.
No, we're not having an executive session.
All right. Okay. So I will annotate that there will be no executive session. Okay.
Okay. Since there will be no changes, other than no executive session, Ms. Allen, would you please call it up?
I would kindly do that. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes. And... There are no board reports. So now we will go to the treasures report.
Okay, I have several things for action this evening. And I'll go slower. I know that we have two board members that last year we did this, and we have a brand-new board member this year. And then Ms. Moore has been to several of these over the years. So I will go kind of slow to try to explain why we do this. So at the end of the year, when we close our books for the year, we have to do several things. We have to present a document that if there's any accounts that are negative, we have to temporarily advance monies from the general fund. And it's temporary, it's so temporary, that once you guys approve the temporary advance, once we open the books for July 1st, that account repays the general fund immediately. The second thing also, we transfer money, and I'll explain this as I go through. So the document in front of you states that from the general fund to these different accounts. So I'll go through these one by one. The first one is a permanent improvement. LFI means locally funded initiative. That was when we built the schools back in 2005-ish. We actually had to take out a loan, and we still are paying on that loan. So there was an agreement a long time ago that the general fund would help fund this line. And we basically have moved $300,000 from the general fund to this line to pay the debt payment. So the debt payments are due twice a year, in June and December. So that gives us enough money to pay our debt payments to the bank. Second one, food service. I've never done it this way, but I thought we could do it. So food service traditionally, in the last two years, I would say, two to three years, has run in the black. We were very, very excited that they ran in the black because years before, we would always have to either advance them or transfer money to them. This year, there was a $372,880.61 negative balance on their books. And so basically, I talked to Mr. Howard and to Mr. Putman and said, okay, why don't we split the difference? And so by splitting the difference, the advance means that they will pay us back, that fund, food service, will pay us back. And then the district will assume the $200,000 to make that whole. I asked Mr. Putman to give me some reasons because I knew that the board would want to know why we're doing that. The primary reason is that food costs has skyrocketed. And the money that we're bringing in is not enough to pay for the cost of running food service. And that was basic. He gave me a long list, but the bottom line is that food cost is astronomical. And so we didn't have the luxury of running in the black this year. So I even talked to him this morning. He says he's not totally sure if he could absorb the $172,000, but he will certainly try in FY '24. And then I'll come back to the board to update you on where we are. We also talked about, Mr. Putman and Mr. Howard and I talked, he plans to come to our finance committee meeting in August to just give us an update of where they are. And obviously, if the rest of the board wants him to do a full-blown presentation, we can schedule that. The next one's preschool. All the other ones are all of our grants. So we have preschool, ARP is American Rescue Plan, that's ESER III, we have ESER II. Those all had negative balances. All of those, when I say reimbursable grants, they are all going to be reimbursed. So we're just temporarily, two seconds, temporarily making our books whole, and then we can move on as an advance. So that's ESER, and then we have special education. We have a school improvement grant. We have Title I, continued. We have Title IV-A, early childhood, special education, the American Rescue Plan, early childhood education, and Title II-A. And so the total for the advancements is $1,406,141.54, and the total transfer is $500,000.
And I would like a motion to approve that, please. Motion of the second.
I'm sorry.
You need a motion?
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry. Okay, so... I need a motion for treasurer's item A.
I'll move treasurer's item A, resolution to approve advances and transfers of funds for fiscal year ending June 30, 2023.
I second that motion as stated.
It's been properly moved. Second, any questions?
I do have a quick question. As far as, I'm madam president, I'm sorry, I do have a question.
I'm not vice president.
In regards to the loan, how much do we have left to pay off? Or you can give me that later.
I can, I can.
Yeah.
You know what? No, 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 no. I brought the debt book with me.
Okay.
And we have several, so...
As far as for the building?
Oh, the LFI?
Yes.
I mean, if you would want me to do this, or I can send an email to the rest of the board.
Sure. Is it okay?
Did you send an email? Okay.
I'm just curious.
I brought the debt book, but I have to look it up.
All right.
That one. But yes, that's a great question. I will send that information to you. You have any other question? Ms. Allen, would you please call it up?
Yes. Ms. Moore?
No, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, Ms. Allen, yes.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes?
Yes. Okay, thank you. The next one is a resolution to approve the amended appropriations for period ending June 30th, 2023. And so that's this fiscal year, we're ending this fiscal year. These are the appropriations that we have on the system. They total $78,74,903.43, and I'm asking you to approve that, those appropriations this evening.
So I need a motion to approve treasurer's report, item B.
I move to accept treasurer's item B, resolution to approve amended appropriations for period ending June 30th, 2023.
I second.
It's been properly moved. Ms. Allen, would you please call it up?
Yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes.
Okay. And the last item I have for you this evening is, this is a resolution to approve the permanent appropriations resolutions for FY 2024. And so you can see that the document is... Is a little different from FY '23 because this is a very guest estimate. And so a good estimate of what we think we might spend, and this is just a start so that we can open our books next week and be able to spend. And so the total appropriations for FY '24 to begin the year And how we get the appropriations, we actually look at what we intend to bring in revenue-wise as an estimate, and then we establish the appropriations based on the estimated revenue. And then after we get all that together, I actually have to send that information to the county, and then they send us back a certified estimated resources to make sure our appropriations aren't more than what we anticipate our resources to be. So this is for FY '24.
I'm sorry. I need a motion to adopt treasurer's item C.
I'll move to accept treasurer's item C, resolution to approve permanent appropriations resolution for FY 2024 as presented.
I second.
It's been moved. Second, Ms. Allen, would you please call it up?
I do have a question.
I'm sorry, do you have any question?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure.
In regards to the ESER, I know that previous meetings, we talked about part of that particular grant was no longer going to be in effect. For this particular amount of money, if the entire... Now, educate me, I don't know if this particular ESER is something that's always re-incurring, will never dry out.
I can, I can.
Okay.
So this ESER includes ESER II and ESER III. So we're finishing ESER II, and we're now, ESER III is starting, this not starting, but it's going to end in June, I say June 30th, 2024.
Okay.
So the ESER dollars will be gone June 30th, 2024. We have the ability to, we have to do all the reports through September 30th, but all of that will be gone.
So I think my question is, that is a very big, significant part to your budget. Are there any other things that we can implement to secure at least close to that amount of money?
All of that, all of that, the majority of that money is tied up in salaries. We actually hired 60 additional people, and the majority of this money is all salaries. And so those salaries are estimated to be paid through 2024. Actually, we didn't have enough money, ESER money, left, so some of those jobs had to be moved back to the general fund. And so that $7 million has ESER II and ESER III in totality.
So I encourage that as a board, we need to start looking at that immediately. So I wouldn't say wait until January to say that.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we've been talking about this forever. And I want, I always say, I want to go on record, Mr. Anderson, to say we cannot wait until the last minute to decide on how we're going to fill in those gaps after those 60 people are no longer funded in ESER. So we're working on that financially, and we will be giving you several reports and several presentations in FY '24 to keep you abreast.
Yeah, so I will charge the board if we can make sure that this is a conversation that we start having in August, September, no later than that, because that is a lot of money. And if, yeah, so that's all I have. Thank you.
So if I'm not mistaken, or correct me if I'm wrong, these positions, they were accepted with the understanding that it's a grant-funded position? Absolutely. Okay. Absolutely, absolutely. So yes.
But if I made chime in, I'm sorry, madam vice president, but we learned that a lot of, some of these services that were provided with the extra amount of employees may still need it beyond next school year.
Absolutely.
And that's why I think it's very important that we start talking about this.
Madam Vice President, I have a question. This is the first time that I'm hearing that we're going to have to dip into a general fund to support these extra positions. So my question is, how much money are we dipping into general fund? Because these were all accepted and approved because of ESER dollars. The general fund was, in my understanding, was not to be touched for this particular situation. So how much?
I would have to get that back to you, but we looked at some of the, and I'll give you, there were some jobs that were put on ESER that were here before. We just put them on ESER because we had that money and we were trying to save the general fund dollars. But there had to be some individuals that had to be moved back to general fund. And we decided to do that, to move them back to general fund, and then see where we are in terms of our general fund money and the ESER dollars as well. So I will get that information definitely to tell you how many individuals on those...
How many, the jobs and the dollar amount?
Yes.
Okay.
So, okay, wait, okay, I want to put this in the notes. Would like a report on the number of jobs, position, and the amount.
Correct.
And I can definitely get that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That will be eliminated and/or that will be moved to the general fund?
These will be moved to the general fund.
Yeah.
So I can get that list for you. That will be...
Madam Vice President. I do have a question in regards to the enterprise fund class. We talked about food services a little, but this one particular item says food service $3.5 million. Can you explain that just a little?
Where are you, I'm sorry? Where are you on?
I'm on the Excel.
You're on food service, oh, oh, $6.35 million?
Yes.
Yes, and so that's the appropriation that we think that they will spend in FY '24.
And for a year? A year?
Yes, yes, that's for the entire year.
Because of the increase that it cost the food, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely, yes, yes.
But remember, it's reimbursable.
Right. But that's, wow, okay, all right. That's a lot of money.
And then a lot, the large majority of that is salaries and benefits. So all of there, the individuals that work for food service, they're paid from food service, oh, oh, six. And it's just not food.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarity.
That's a lot of good.
Yeah.
And just for clarity, and this is something that, you know, Ms. Moore probably knows, and, you know, could just be a point of clarification. The food service fund, because we are a federally qualified program, we have no anticipation of making a profit. What we want to do every year is, if we can, is if we can break even. So when you go places, these different schools, and you see things like Chick-fil-A, we can't serve those things because we're federally qualified program. All of our kids eat free. So unfortunately, there are pros and cons to that. The pros are, we have to adhere to all of the federal standards and federal guidelines that are in place. But also, we have to make sure that our kids enjoy the meals that they eat. So with food service, if prices shoot up, we still got to feed the kids because we're a federally qualified program. So the federal government is now trying to work on adjusting some of those commodity prices, so on and so forth. But if we break even, we're good. We're not trying to make any money. Some districts make money because they do different things, but they don't qualify federally like we do. So everything they do is to try to make money.
Okay. Madam Vice President, to Mr. Howard, are there different packages that schools can get? Like a certain tier in regards to food service, or just one basic plan?
That's a great question. So if you qualify federally under CAP program, what happens is, they give you a list of guidelines that says you can't serve anything with more sugar than this, or they have to have this amount of fiber, or this amount of vitamin. I mean, there's a guideline we get every year. So our responsibility is to go to, like, these vendor fairs and try to find foods that equate to what we can serve in the school. And one of our issues we run into all the time is pizza. You know, we have to serve this whole wheat pizza slice that for years, kids couldn't stand. So we ended up throwing it away more than the kids eating it. So food service directors under the federally qualified programs got together all across the country, and they got with Domino's and Pizza Hut, and they said, hey, the kids don't like this. So they had to retool those types of things. But everything, and we do a presentation at the beginning of the year that the board has to approve the federally qualified standards. But everything has to fit within this box.
Okay.
So that's why you don't see, you know, the Chick-fil-A's and the Subway's and things like that, because if they don't fit within a box, we can't serve them.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
One other, Madam Vice President?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. A question or a comment for treasurer? I know you shared that some of those jobs were rolling into the general fund. When you send that information out, can you send maybe a potential that maybe some of those positions can fall under some of these awards that the district has won?
Yes, absolutely, and we've done that, Ms. Moore.
Would you please?
Great, great thing. Because we have moved some of those to Title I, Fund 572. So I will include that as well.
Thank you. So that minimizes the risk on the general fund. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, and I will do that.
Okay. That's all that I have.
Any other questions? Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
I certainly will. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis? Mrs. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes.
And that was all I had. And I think while you're talking, I might be able to find that answer to Mr. Anderson's question on our desk.
Next is the superintendent's report, which is the approval of personnel agenda.
Thank you. I'm sitting in on behalf of Dr. Cosby, and on her behalf, she is requesting, I believe she is requesting action tonight on the personnel agenda. There are two items. See one, recommendation for the approval of the following administrative resignations. And see two, recommendation for the approval of the following two-year administrative contracts for the '23, '24 school year. And again, she is asking for action on those this evening.
I need a motion to accept the superintendent's personnel agenda for see one, the resignation, and see two for the two-year contract for the two administrative.
I'll move to accept superintendent items under personnel agenda.
I second that motion as stated.
Do you have any questions?
Yes. This afternoon, Madam Vice President, we received some emails from our legal department. And so I just want to clarify, as we're voting on this personnel agenda, the clarification on, is it C? What item is it? C two? There were some red-line edits, but a clean version based on the changes to Mr. Manley's contract. And I want to make sure that we're voting on that clean copy, okay? Because there was two copies. And there was just some verbiage. Doesn't change the terms, it doesn't change this two years, it doesn't change that we're going to hire him, okay? It's just verbiage in the contract, and it's a clean copy. That clean copy was sent over to the powers that be. My, I don't know, I'm thinking that it was sent over to HR. It may have been sent over also to the superintendent's support person. But that's the item that we're actually voting on. So we've accepted the motion to accept the personnel agenda. However, in the vote, and this is board, it should be identified that, yes, however, on item...
C two?
C two? The clean copy. Version?
Will be provided, yes, will be...
Clean, we are voting on a clean copy version. Okay, that's what we're, it's already provided, but we don't know because we don't have it attached. So I just want to make it clear, we're voting on the clean copy version.
So I was wondering if you wouldn't mind me reading back what I have in the minutes?
Yes.
I put, Board Member Moore wanted to make sure they, and I'll put the board, are voting on a clean copy for Mr. Manley's contract. Is that, is that...
Clean copy version based off the changes.
Clean copy.
Made by our legal counsel.
Clean cop...
Copy.
Copy version.
Uh-huh, version.
Of Mr. Manley's contract.
Yeah, and just say, clean copy versions of the certified administrative contract.
Versions of the certified administrators.
Contract.
Contract.
So C two?
Right.
Yeah, we're saying yes, however, C two
Got it.
is based on the clean version.
Got it, got it. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Based off the changes made by our law director.
Based on the changes of our law director.
Made by.
Changes made by the law director. Okay? We have it.
Madam Vice President, I just have, if you don't mind, I have one recommend, well, recommendations in regards to when we get into the administrative personnel agenda. Moving forward, is it possible that we can have the resume, contract, offer letter attached to the personnel agenda for the individuals on the board to skim through, read over, to make sure that we're all in one accord and we know what exactly we're voting for to prevent situations just as what's occurring? And also resignation letters, if possible. I don't know if that's ethical to have that attached to, because we vote on it, and we want to know why someone is deciding to leave the district. I don't know if that's appropriate. But I think that moving forward, and I don't say this in a disrespectful way, I just don't want to vote on anything blind. I want to make sure that we have all the information available as we move forward to better our district, and so we can accurately vote on different information presented to the board.
May I?
Yes.
Madam Vice President, Mr. Anderson, that is not an unreasonable request. I've sat in on other districts' board meetings where they are hiring administrative personnel, and those are in the executive tab in their board docs.
Okay.
And it's just information. And it's just information, and so it's not an unreasonable request, we've just never really asked for it. Um, and I know that we've gotten an email today, ooh, my thing just went off, okay? An email today based on those administrative contracts, but yes, they can absolutely be in the executive tab.
Okay, awesome.
It's, it's the board's pleasure.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that, I'm sorry, that's my phone.
It's in the, it's in another room. Yeah, it's, it's, it's far away, Ms. Allen. No, it's, it's over there.
Okay, well, glad it's over there.
Okay, it's over there, okay?
Eric went to, Mr. Miller went to go find it.
Those are my only comments, so as we accept this motion for each individual board member. It's definitely something that we want, however, we need to make the clarification on C two. Yes, based on the clean versions of the changes made by our law director with those comments.
And if you, I'm sorry, Madam President, Vice President, um, if you can, if you wanna be technical for legal reasons. Um, you can say, um, we want the, um, updated contract as of June the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, that was sent to the board, um, versus the one that was presented, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a lot of words, let's just put it on legal, okay? It's the contract, it's the clean version, I'm reading the email, that's where that's coming from, and this is the email from our law director. That's it for me, thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions?
And I, I will want, can I clarify you what you just said, Mister Anderson would like the contracts and resonate- resignation letters attached to the board agenda. And the executive tab, does that kind of, okay, summarize?
What else did you ask for in the contracts?
The contracts, offer letters.
Resume?
And resume.
The contracts, he said.
Contract, offer letter, resume.
The contracts?
Well, resume, offer letter, contract.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Alright, resume, offer letter, contract.
Resume. Offer letter. And contract.
Oh, and the resignation.
Oh, resignation letter, yes.
Offer letter, contracts, and resignation letters, okay. Alright, I have it there.
And I do have another question, um, in regards to resignation, I'm, I know that at any time, anyone can render a resignation. But in re- in regards to the district, um, when it comes to benefits and other things. Uh, what, I would love to know via email, what's the requirements for different department staff in resignation? For example, my job, I have to give a thirty-day notice. Um, I need, I would like to know those types of, how long a teacher must give a notice, a director, et cetera. And if they don't give the proper notice, what are they losing? Because if we're doing this for the kids, as the goal and the mission is, is that, I, I just don't. Find it easy to accept the resignation immediately or under two weeks. Definitely when it's in regards to classroom. And I don't mean to be sensitive about that, but I just wanna know the requirements.
I have that in the.
Mister Howard, I have a question, in your years of experience. In reference to what Mister Anderson is asking. Has teachers given a two-week, is, i- is it a policy to give two weeks immediate resignation? Or is it based on, um, if there is a, like, a, a immediate danger, I can understand something like that, but other than that. In your years of experience, has it been a two-week notice, thirty-day notice abruptly, or? Or all of the above?
In, in the, in the perfect circumstance, yes, two weeks is, but under the, you know, under the Ohio revise code. You have until July tenth to resign. Uh, anything after July tenth, the school district has the, um, the option to. Uh, report you to the state and then there could be an opportunity for your license to be pulled. But teachers do have until July tenth, and sometimes we do get resumes on, I mean, re- resignations on July ninth. And we really can't do anything about that.
That's right.
As far as an administrative contract, it, it's usually two weeks, which, which is what, you know, what we, you know, we have traditionally had.
Madam Vice President to the, uh, Mister Howard, within the school year, so if I was a, a teacher. In the middle of November, what's the requirements, because July is a long way.
Well, if that is the, 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 the situation, which has hap- has happened before, sometimes, um. You want the resignation and based upon what had happened. And then if that happens in the middle of the school year, the school district has the right to report that to the Ohio Department of Education. And if people leave, just up and leave, then we can report that and the Office of Professional Conduct will investigate. And people have had their license, uh, revoked because of that. You just can't up and leave in the middle of the year and just go take another job without, without consequences.
Okay.
And tho- those provisions are all writ, written out in the Ohio, uh, standards for educators, conduct educators. But in the summer is, July tenth is the drop-down day, and, uh. You know, with, with an administrative contract, starting on, contracts renewing is starting on July one. You know, up until that term, but usually we do get two weeks, I mean, that's the standard. For the teachers, it's, it's, it's not, some may do it on July ninth because they have it to the tenth.
It's always July tenth?
I believe so, yeah, July tenth for certified, certified staff, yeah. But that's statewide, it's just not here.
Right. Alright, are there any more questions?
Command?
Well, then I need a motion.
You, you already have a motion.
Oh, we already have a motion.
Yes.
So, Ms. Allen, would you please call the robe?
I will, Ms. Moore.
Um, yes, with the exception on C two. To accept the clean versions of the administrative contracts. Based off the law director's changes.
Okay. Mister Davis?
Yes, exception C two with legal reasons, personnel.
Okay, Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, with the exception, um, with the exception of the clean version for C two. For the administrative contract.
Madam Tre- Madam, Madam Vice President, Madam Treasurer, um, I would like to. Make sure I note that for C two as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Cherry?
Yes.
I, I, I have a couple things that I would like to, to go back around for, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Um, to answer Mister Anderson's question about the debt, I'm gonna have to send that to you.
Wait, excuse me, we have to close this, so motion passes.
Motion passes.
Okay, yeah, we had, we were still on that, okay, I thought it was this.
Yeah, I thought it was this. Okay, uh, Mister Anderson, I'll send this, the, the, um, the debt schedules show each, um. Each date that a particular amount is due, when you said what's left, I would have to look at that and then subtract what we've already paid.
Okay.
But I can say, I can tell you this, that, um, the, uh, permanent improvement piece. Um, we have until twenty thirty-four, um, to finish paying for that. And then we have a bond retirement on our other buildings, and we have to twenty thirty to pay for that.
Okay.
So I will send that information to you as well.
Great.
Um, the other thing is, um, very quickly, um, I wanted to just bring your attention to. I, I, um, had in front of you a treasurer's update, I wanted to talk about the first item. Um, so that everyone will be aware of what's going on. Um, I know the president, I saw an email, she wanted some, uh, more facts, I wanted to just let you guys know that there was an issue of check fraud. We had a, um, a check that was issued and it was issued to a particular entity. And, um, it was, it was whitewashed, and what whitewashing is, is when someone takes the payee's name and changes it. It was changed, the check was, um, was, um, cash for that amount, so I'm working with PNC Bank for that. And so I just wanted to let you guys, I know that and be aware of that. The second thing is, I just want to make sure we were, we were all on the same page in terms of when our next meeting is gonna be. Because we did have, uh, we did, um, say that we're gonna move, not have a July sixth meeting and move it to July thirteen. So I want to make sure we were clear on that, and then it was also suggested that we don't, that we would not have any more meetings in July. Because the next meeting is August the first or second, so I was just wanting to throw that out to the board.
That is correct.
Okay, so that's correct, okay.
I will, um, Madam Vice President, I would like the minutes to reflect that I will not be present at that July thirteenth meeting. I'll be in Cancun, so, enjoying myself, so.
So you said Mister Anderson? On the July sixth, thirteenth meeting?
Yeah, if we had a virtual option, I'd be there, but we don't.
That, that's all.
That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Okay.
My only comment is, um, when we do the agendas, let's just make sure that when we. Uh, before we approve the agendas, that we add comments, okay? So that we stick to the agenda, I mean, and not just comments for treasurer, superintendent, but even from the board. Cause I might wanna say some, but anyway, but anyway, um, but that, I, I know.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and it may have just been an oversight, you know, not to put a comment.
And gen- generally, Ms. Moore, you, remember, we can go back and look at it, normally we don't have the comments on.
All the special meetings, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's why it wasn't on there, but I knew that I, I needed to have a couple things and, and I don't think it prohibited us.
Treasurer's report, it wasn't, it wouldn't have been for action, it just would have been for information only, yeah. That just tightens things up, and then when we go back and I look at an agenda and we say we talked about certain things.
And where is?
It's, it's on here, I can say, oh, yeah, I'm looking, cause you're not reading the minutes a lot of times, you're just looking at the agenda.
So I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, Ms. Allen, would you please call the robe?
Yes, I will.
Uh, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Mister Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Meeting adjourned.